October 21st, 2019, meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is public participation. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close public participation. We're on to item number three, which is the request to conduct a survey of Merrimack High School parents regarding the vision of the graduate with Eileen Banfield. So I welcome to the table Eileen and welcome and thank you for coming.
There it is. All right. Well, thank you for hosting me and I was here last year with Marcy Pope and Mark Merfield and we were asking for permission to conduct a survey with students and parents with regard to the first part of the NEASC process. And if you are unfamiliar with the NEASC process, every 10 years, the high school goes through an accreditation process where we are evaluated on how well we're doing with regard to what we should be doing. And it is a process that we've always gone through and NEASC stands for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And it is a decennial process, which, a cycle that we are in about a year, two and a half of. So the self-reflection process was the first part of the process that we did last year. And out of that self-reflection process came a visit from the NEASC committee and they evaluated us and gave us a list of commendations and recommendations. And a piece that is missing from our accreditation process is this piece called the Vision of the Graduate, from which everything in the NEASC standards stems. And this vision of the graduate is what we envision as a school in the community for our graduates to look like. And we have started gathering some information because NEASC would like us to survey all stakeholders in this process, which include the students, the staff, the families and the community. And we have already evaluated or garnered some information from the staff in a process and we have did an activity in homerooms with students where we got their feedback about what they would, they think they should be able to do and what skills they should have, what they should, where they see themselves going, what they need when they graduate, what they think they'll look like. And now it's time to evaluate or to get information from the parents and the parents and the community. And so we can't do the same type of activity that we did with the students and the staff, which was to put up an outline of a human and have them post its on about where they think they should go, what they should be able to do, what they should care about, what they should know, how they should communicate. So we took some of the NEASC language and we made this survey, which we would like to give out. And that's it.
Are there any questions on the survey, its intent and content? Seeing none, I have one very specific question.
Sure.
What is your timeline for conducting the survey and looking to compile and get results based on your accreditation process timeline?
Certainly. Our decennial visit is not until the spring of 2021. So it's in another year and a half. But this survey is paramount to us continuing any work because the vision of the graduate, we need to, we need to get that focused so we can then begin any curriculum work or pieces. So we're hoping to finish it by the beginning of this year, to have our vision of the graduate completed.
And that's including the dissemination, the compilation, the analysis and? And how much time are you estimating it was going to take? So basically I'm looking at normally we would put something on consent in two weeks, but if you felt like you needed the time, it's actually probably closer to three because of the end of the month. If you felt like you needed the three weeks to do some of that work, would you be looking for us to waive our quote unquote two-week rule?
That would be amazing, but I understand if it can't be done.
Okay. Those are my questions. Andy?
So how will parents receive this survey? And first of all, how will they know that you want them to fill out the survey? How will they fill it out and then how will you then? Because these are like free form answers. How will you then compile the results at the end?
It is a, it will be a, through email. And so it's all electronic. Sharon Putting, our principal, she has ways of reaching the parents. And then there will probably, I would imagine, be something on the school website. So if parents do not have email access or we don't have their correct email, they'll know that they can contact us with regard to that. And I would say we will read through them and then begin to compile the answers. And we're finding that, make notes as they come along. And then we'll give all of that information to the committee, which will be forming, which will be made up of parents and community members and students and faculty as well.
My wife's in another district, so I've seen her go through the NEASC process before. But how, how do you verify that the respondents are truly parents that are trying to provide constructive input versus students or what? I mean, if you open up a survey to people, you get people responding maybe you don't expect. I mean, is there any way that you're gonna, any check and balance to make sure you're truly getting parent responses?
I would say we'll have to rely on the fact that we have the parent emails that we're giving them to them. I hadn't thought through that. That's how we gave out the survey before to the parents when, for the self-reflection committee or the self-reflection survey. So I would say that the email sent out would be the verification.
I may be overthinking it. I'm just knowing how sometimes people with, that have a negative about it may choose to use this as a, as a way to put negative things in that may not be representative of what you're trying to look for. You know, that may not be parents or former parents or something like that.
It's, it's a very, we're looking for very specific information. So if you look at the questions, what would enable them to be career-ready? And we're looking for, I'm just looking at number five question. And so we're looking at very, not for very specific information, but we're looking kind of for a consensus. And this committee will look at the answers and decide what, as a whole group, is most important to us. So if there are these outlying comments, then they may not have a lot of support from other people. So they may not be included in the vision of the graduate.
Naomi?
Andy, I think your point is valid in a larger way. I think that it's not so much an issue for this particular one, but I think we've been finding more instances where the district might want to look at the kinds of survey software that allow a one-link, one-answer type of an arrangement. Just as a generic thing to think about. But I think that as far as the survey goes, that wouldn't be a deal breaker.
Okay. Okay. So with that, we have the choice of moving it forward tonight or entertaining, putting it on consent in two weeks. So I will kind of go with the will of the board, see where we want to go with this. Andy?
I'll make a motion. I move that we allow the survey to go forward and waive the two-week rule.
Is there a second? Seconded by Brandy. And Cindy, I think you got it anyway, but we'll go through the formalities. So with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. The motion carries 5:00. So you've got three weeks of head start time. So thank you very much, Eileen, and good luck in the work. I know it's a very huge process and thank you in advance from us to the committee that's going through the accreditation process.
I'm just pleased to be allowed to do this. It's a fascinating process.
So, well, I'm glad you're taking it on with such vigor. So we appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Take care. We are on to item number four, which is the response to the receipt of additional state adequacy aid. So I'm just, I want to bring to the attention of the community that we were invited to Town Hall last Friday to be in the company of Governor Sununu regarding the additional state adequacy aid that has been afforded to the Merrimack School District. The town also received adequacy aid in this process. So members of the town council were there, our state reps were there. And what that is, is adequacy aid is not something that, you know, it's additional aid and therefore not like additional revenue. The way we have to address that aid that came in, and Matt, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit because I didn't prep you for the question, but we have gotten our first payment or it is, it's coming before?
Yeah, the first payment was done last Friday.
Last Friday. Okay. And the amount was?
It was around $600 and something thousand dollars.
Right. So it was over $600,000 that came into our accounts last Friday. So there was a ceremonial check, but literally there was not an actual check. But with that, the school district has very specific rules regarding state adequacy aid. We are not in a position to do anything with it, but use it to basically return it to the taxpayer. So we essentially laundered it through in a very legal way. So it came through our accounts and will go to the taxpayer. It cannot be used for anything like infrastructure improvements or if we wanted to get materials, if we wanted to do anything like that, if we wanted to do roofing, we can't do any of that. The only way those things could have been done is if we could have petitioned the state, which by the way would have created a ripple effect of other issues, but we would have had to petition the state to have an actual election process. You know, the whole nine yards, the budget process, the budget committee process, the deliberative session and the ballot vote. That's the only way, if we wanted that, those funds to be used for anything other than reducing the tax rate, that we could have actually had the opportunity to do so. So that is where we are at. I know that there was a, one of our state reps basically was asking the community to call us to tell us that that's what they wanted done with it. And honestly, there's nothing more that we could do with it. So it is, it is what it is. And that's exactly what's going to happen. Cindy?
Can you explain to me what the governor was talking about? He started, on Friday, he mentioned something about the year two, about it being a two-year.
Well, usually when they, when they set the budget, they send, they have a bionic budget, so they have a two-year. So in the past, if you were getting $8 million, $8.8 million for year one, year two would be the exact same amount.
So is there a way we can confirm that? Because that would then, A, well, first of all, we're getting money back from the government. We weren't, I mean, from the state that we weren't expecting. And we can give that to the taxpayer. That's great. I'll take any money they want to give us. Secondly, it sounds like we have some choices for year two that we don't have for year one.
Not really. Adequacy per the RSAs, adequacy money is not considered unanticipated revenue, period. So in order to access that, you have to hold a special meeting, like Shannon had mentioned. And right now, if you wanted to, the town's in the middle of setting their tax rate. That's happening as we speak. And so if you wanted to do that now, you'd have to hold a special meeting, which would either hold the town up from setting their tax rate or they would set it as is and then any money we spent from this money after going through the entire budget process. We're talking budget committee, deliberative session, ballot, everything like that, would either have to find the additional funds if we were going to spend some from this money or they would have to hold a supplemental tax billing, which is two things they don't want to do.
I think we agree, we don't want that.
We don't want that either.
So the long and the short of it, I just want to be clear. And I, again, it's money that's going to our taxpayers. So it's better than not getting money for our taxpayers. I think that that's a good thing. But it sounds like in both years, the money has to go to offset the tax rate. So we couldn't, we couldn't say, okay, we want to save the taxpayers' interest that we're paying and pay off one of our bonds, for example.
No, you would, you would have the money go, reduce the tax rate by having it flow into surplus. And then if you wanted to raise money based upon the extra money you got, you would do that as a part of a normal budgetary process, but you can't.
Could you do a warrant article for that?
Yeah, you could, but as part of the budgetary process. But it wouldn't be specifically tied to spending the adequacy money. The adequacy money is just revenue coming in, as it always has been. So you wouldn't create, craft a warrant article saying, we have this extra money. Because in year two, it's not extra money. It's the same money you got year one. So it's not in addition. This is the first year it's in addition.
But does it leave any options for a warrant article or something else? Or it's just, however it is, it is. I'm just trying to understand.
No. The adequacy funds are there. They're put in the tax rate-setting process and they're counted as netting the school appropriation.
Okay. I just got a different.
That's it.
I just got a different.
There was a lot of communications going on as far as that goes and there was a lot of confusion. At first it was, okay, this is unanticipated revenue, which it wasn't, but they said it was unanticipated revenue. Therefore, the board could hold a meeting like this, public hearing and spend the money. That was not true. So there was a lot of that going on. So what you can do with it, the only thing you should do with it is to take it and use it to reduce the tax rate, period.
So you don't have to write about that specific item because that's what's going to happen anyway. But if you have any questions, we're always open for a call or an email. So on that note, Mark?
So I appreciate, Cindy, your questioning that because it's important to clarify because as we enter the budget season, I think some of the way that this has been interpreted could be interpreted by some would be, well, isn't this great? Because the district can use that for things that the district needs. And, and that is absolutely untrue. So as we enter the budget season, that cannot be taken into account when we place the budget before the board. So we wanted to make sure that that was expressed tonight because it could be the view of some that that's the case and it is not the case. So I just think it's worth, I appreciate that you asked that. So it's worth our continuing to make that point.
Right. And the other thing that I think was brought up is that we, it just needs to be reminded that it's something I don't want to bring up every meeting, but it's definitely a strong message that needs to go out. We do not, period, retain a surplus. So with that, you know, what can it create, like a dip and a spike in the tax rate? Sure it can. So, and that's something that I don't think the governor quite understood when I was asking that question either. So on that note, yes, because it's reducing taxes beyond what we expected, you know, and we're going to ask for the money to do the work that we need to do. So, but you have a dip because it's the tax rate that we were projecting when we were doing all our budgeting was at a rate before this money was even identified to us. So that's, that's the one thing I wanted to clarify.
That's correct. So on the budget and revenue summary that was passed out at deliberative session, it showed as an estimated amount, $8.1 million. And we're getting $8.8 million. So the only thing is, is it's better than what we had estimated and it's coming in and it's going to reduce taxes. As far as retaining surplus, the town obviously can retain surplus. It's always been that way. There's not a specific law that states they can, but there's administrative rulings say that they can and they have and they should because they should retain enough surplus, number one, to plan for unexpended issues that happen. And then number two, so they have enough cash to meet their obligations depending upon what percentage of the tax warrant they collect. Because I remember in years when the economy was really bad, you could book a tax warrant and you wouldn't collect 100% of that. You're lucky you collected 75. So where's the rest of the money coming from? It comes from that cash on hand that's in surplus. We could, however, if you ever wanted to entertain discussion on creating a warrant article, put a warrant article forward that would allow us to retain a certain percentage of surplus.
Right. But to that end, just, I'm going to finish your thought and make you finish it for me. And that is if we did go to expend those monies, there are very, two or three specific things we could use it for and to use it, we would have to have a hearing for the DLE.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. Okay.
So really, I think at the, the long and the short of it is, is that the tax rate will be lower than originally anticipated for two years?
With our estimates that we had originally put forward at deliberative, the amount we're going to estimate for Medicaid funds due to the ruling changes, that's going down. But this is going up. But the Medicaid money is going down less than this is going up. So it'll be a net increase.
Okay. So, I mean, the long and the short of it is that we want to be mindful of that because two years from now, if the money does not continue, is when our taxpayers will notice that.
There's your issue. I recall 15 years ago, we were getting $10.1 million in adequacy funding. And then we dipped down to a low of 7.3 and now we're back up to 8.1 and 8.8.
And our taxpayers felt that.
They certainly did because it was in one year that we lost like $2 million worth of revenue because of the adequacy funding formula. And that was a while back. But I've got them plotted out, you know, so it's there.
Are there any, any questions about adequacy? What happened? Andy, you're, you're good? I thought your hammer's up. It was, but it's, it's now down. Okay. So, on that note, we will go on to item number five, which is state requirements and best practices concerning class size and student-teacher ratios. And turn it over to Mark.
Thank you. So as has been the practice for the last couple of board meetings, we're trying to present to the board and to the community some information that we think is helpful in anticipation of putting forth the budget when that happens later on in the fall. And one of the things that really impacts the budget has to do with our staffing. So, and our staffing is in relationship to our enrollments. And so I thought it would be helpful to talk to you a little bit about that tonight. So I wanted to start by referencing ED 306.17 in the New Hampshire Department of Ed Minimum Standards, and that's around class size. And so the state has issued the following requirements relative to class size. It's something that you all probably know and remember from years past, but for the sake of those watching who might not, I'll just share it with you. So in K to two, it reads like this, 25 students or fewer in each school and, per educator, 25 students per educator or fewer. And each school shall strive to achieve the class size of 20 students or fewer. So the minimum standard is 25 students or fewer and each school shall strive to achieve the class size of 20 students or fewer. That's in the state minimum standards. That's in K to two. In grades three to five, it reads 30 students or fewer and each school shall strive to achieve, to achieve 25 students or fewer. So they give you what it cannot exceed and then it gives you what you should strive for. And in middle school and high school, 30 students or fewer and they don't indicate a shall strive to exceed. So it's 30 students or fewer. Then there's an important additional guidance that is provided by the state and that's for any class that has labs. So that would be science or career and tech ed. And in career and tech ed and science, in no case can a class exceed 24 if it comes with a lab. So it's very important for the board and the public to know that our staffing recommendations are not just ours on our own. We're guided by state requirements. And that's, that's very important. So those will be what we use when we put together our budget moving forward. In addition to the state requirements, there are just some things that make logical sense. And that is that the smaller the class size theoretically, the more likely it is that you can achieve excellent instruction. Now, it is possible that that could not be so. You could have a very small class and an ineffective instructor. But assuming that you have effective instructors, smaller class size is very supportive of good outcomes. There are all kinds of, you simply have to go onto the computer and Google class size and you can find very few things that encourage larger class sizes. But you can find a lot of reputable research that speaks to the value of smaller class sizes. In Merrimack, we've spoken to the board for a long time about trying to provide our teachers with flexibility within parameters. So in addition to trying to keep class size at a reasonable level to promote good interactions and effective interactions between teachers and student, we also have been doing other things to try to provide teachers with flexibility to encourage their adaptability to student needs. We have also, for a long time, encouraged individualized instruction. Now, it is also the case that in a public school, we welcome and are happy to have all kinds of learners. And so in a typical public school setting, you have a large variety of learners and so individualized instruction is easier or more challenging based on the needs of the students with you. But we've done a lot of work with our teachers on providing individualized instruction. In addition, this board and previous boards have been very supportive, as has the town, who have consistently supported our budgets to provide updated curriculum and tools. We have recently adopted a math program, K to eight and nine through 12, that is yielding great results. We have really been supported by providing curriculum, develop, curriculum tools to teachers in concert with really updated tools to support the curriculum. So, so in addition to just trying to stay focused on class size requirements, we're also trying to continue to do our, the kind of work that we need to do to make sure that the teachers in those classes are as good as they can be. Because as I said before, you could have small class size and ineffective instruction. So what Merrimack School District continues to try to do is to try to leverage smaller class size with quality professional development and quality instruction. And the board and the public have been very helpful with that over the years and the tools that they've given us. And so, and in addition, you've heard us say for a long time in this year, that we're working on universal design for learning. We'll have more to say about that in upcoming meetings. We've had something to say about it since our August academy. But universal design for learning is, is a, one of the biggest initiatives we've undertaken in Merrimack in a long time to really get to the heart of good quality instruction by identifying barriers to learning, wherever those exist, and to try to overcome them in concrete and consistent and determined ways. And so that, coupled with our class size requirements by the state, is going to factor into what we present to the board when we present the budget. We have right now, as of last year, our class size ratios in grades K to one and two, as this is last school year, so the school year that ended in, in June, was 18.5. Our ratios in grades three and four was 20.3 and in grades five through eight, 24.2, not including lab classes. And there is no state data for the nine through 12, but our data has been consistently around 25 to 26 on average students per class at the high school with notable exceptions for some electives that are considerably smaller and then like AP courses that generally have a smaller enrollment, but on average. And so as you can see, we're in line with the state's requirements around the minimum standards and really trying to achieve what they have set out for us, which is to try to have a specific number lower than the maximum minimum standard that they have for us. So we're continuing to try to do that and that will certainly inform our efforts moving forward. And so school enrollment is connected to that, but I will leave that.
Are there any questions on student ratio goals that the district guides by? Okay. So we'll let you keep going.
All right.
Item number six, which is school enrollment trends.
So this is really important. So everything in my world lives in 10 years. So I've been in Merrimack for 10 years and so I'm very interested in the 10-year marker. So if we look back at enrollment 10 years ago, anybody who's paid attention knows that we've had a decline in enrollment from that high watermark of around 4,400, 4,500 students around 2,008, 2,009 school year. And then, as we all know, in that period of time, it declined. And the low point was in the 2016, 17 school year when we reached 3,680 students. year, when we reached three thousand six hundred and eighty students. Interestingly, that sense of decline in, in student enrollment has permeated the popular thinking of, of some folks in town. And, and I'm here to tell you tonight that we've actually reached the low point of our enrollment. And what I would point out to you is that in 2017-18, uh, twenty seventeen-18, our numbers climbed to thirty-seven hundred and fifty-five. In eighteen nineteen, it was thirty-seven hundred and eighty-nine. And in the enrollment chart that you see tonight, as of October first, which is when we have to report the numbers, our current enrollment is three thousand nine hundred and fifteen. That's where we stand now. In addition to that, we commissioned a study with NESDEC, and I am embarrassed to tell you that I should remember what NESDEC stands for, New England. Matt, does any?
New England.
I should have written that down. I'm embarrassed. I'll let you know. NESDEC is the, is the group that we have worked with on enrollment projections for years. And Don Kennedy is the individual who conducts our projections for us. And here is what he wrote to us. Although the district is experiencing eleven fewer births per year than in the past, there are many new families moving in. The district K-12 enrollment is expected to rise by thirty to fifty students each year for the next several years, up to five years. So, and then after that, they can't project reasonably. So, I want to just say that again, because it is frequently, oh, thank you very much, New England, thank you, New England School Development Council. That's NESDEC. Thank you. And so, it is, it seems to just be something that folks seem to kind of want to consistently report, that we're in declining enrollment. That has not been the case for the last two years. And now our number is just shy of four thousand. And I think that's a really good thing, because what it means is that in addition to, you know, the, the birth rate, which is completely out of anyone's control, we have, I like to think a district that people find has value, and that people choose to come to Merrimack. And we see that, because I've been meeting with the principals frequently throughout this year, and what they tell us is that their front offices are very, very busy enrolling new students. So, we welcome them all, and we welcome them all with a capital A. That's all. That's every student with every kind of need, and we find a place for them. And we find a way to help them, hopefully. So, I think that in combination with the state requirements around class size, it's just important for the board and the public to know what the school enrollment trends are, both projection and actual. So we actually have three thousand nine hundred and fifteen students in our schools right now, and that number is increasing still. So, I share that with you.
I see Matt, if you have something to add, and I have questions to my right.
I just want to, seeing that Mark is giving his presentation, I just want to mention that in our budget book, you see the enrollment projections along with all the backup that's done. So we in turn do our own in-house enrollment projections. We have for thirty years. And us doing those independently of seeing Don Kennedy's report, who I've known Don Kennedy for decades now, it is parallel to what he is saying. So from our vantage point, we almost match the exact information that he's giving you now. And we're seeing that because Merrimack's an attractive town because of the services that are here, police, fire, highway, schools, everything like that. It's in a great location. If you put your house on the market in this town, you better be ready to get the moving van out, because somebody's going to buy it, and you're going to be, you know, looking for another place to live. So this is a very attractive place for couples that come in that have younger kids. And even though the birth rate has not increased, the amount of move-ins, the amount of turnover has acted to increase our enrollments like it usually does in a community, because everything is cyclical. You know, we've listened to Tim Thompson enough to, who's a great asset for us to, to have at the table from time to time. And to, to listen to him, you know, there are cycles. And we're hitting, we always said, we're going to be declining for a number of years. Then we're going to plateau off for a couple of years. And then it's going to start climbing up. And now we're in the climb-up period. So, it's all kind of coming true, what everybody's been talking about for the last few years, that if you look at the enrollment projections and you just kind of extrapolate them out from like five years ago when the trend was going down, if you just took those numbers without any other inputs, and you put them out twenty years, you'd have no kids in your school district. That doesn't make any sense, right? So you look at all these other factors that we get, and Don Kennedy's report is, is awesome to look at, so.
Thank you. So I saw Andy and Cindy, and there's a, that's, that's, okay, good. So Andy, I'll let you start.
So, just two really quick questions. One, does his projections include the increase in housing that we're getting as far as apartments and all that? Includes all that dynamic?
Yes.
Okay. And the second piece is, when we account for students, I know that there's two categories in the distribution. One that talks about out-of-district placements that are special ed usually done, and the other are home studies. How do you account for students that, people that live in Merrimack that are choosing charter schools? Does, does that account in any of this, or does the increase in population not take into account students that are choosing to go somewhere else?
We, we, we've never included home study kids in our enrollment projections. They're there. When we do our sheet, they're there, but they're not, they're not counted as far as our counts go.
But I guess my question is, are homes, people that choose to go to charter school categorized the same as home study, or is it a different?
It's a different category.
So, with the increase, so the other thing that's, the dynamic that's changed is during the last ten years, there's also been a significant increase in charter schools. So the fact that our population dropped and then is increasing, while there's still people that reside in town that are going either to private or charter schools, shows that we're not sacrificing one for the other. Everything's sort of growing together.
That is absolutely true.
That's a true statement.
Right. Because I'm, to me, you know, you look at the ebbs and the flows, there are all kinds of dynamics. There's kindergarten, there's preschool, and then there's charter schools, and there's private schools, and there's ebbs and flows there. So, I just wanted to make sure people understood, it's not as though we're bunching things together to make the number look like it's growing. And in fact, it's, we're, we're not counting the kids that are going to charters and stuff which are increasing. This is strictly a population increase into the Merrimack.
Enrolled in our schools right now, not including homeschool or charter school. That's exactly right.
Correct.
Thank you.
Cindy?
Is it true that charter schools are increasing in the last ten years?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then, I just had a clarifying question, just to make sure I heard you right. It sounds like the dip in our declining enrollment hit its low, and for the last two years, it's, the trend is now going up and expected to go up further.
That is correct.
Okay. Could I make a request? Could you put that on a graph?
Yes.
For us, and then just put that on our website? That's something that comes up every now, and then it's a good resource for the community to have.
We'll do it.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on enrollments? Uh, this will come in our budget books with more detail as well in a couple of weeks, weeks. And
Working on it.
We will, we'll dive in from there. So, on to item number seven, which is the review of school board policy, KHC, Distribution and Display of Information at Schools. And I will let you frame it up, Mark.
Thank you. So, Marge Chaffrey taught me a thousand things, and I use the things she taught me every day. And one of the things she said was that policies work until there's a reason to review them, and then when there's a reason to review them, we should review them. And so, tonight, the distribution and display of information at schools has, has come up as a policy, because there have been a number of rulings at the state level and beyond that cause us to believe that our current policy might not exactly fit tho, the changes that have been the product of those rules. And so we want to be sure that we are consistent with the law and what our requirements are. And so, what I'll do tonight is I will read the new policy, and then I'll just characterize for the board how to think about what the difference is. But first, this is Distribution and Display of Information at Schools. One of the strongest links of communication between the Merrimack School District and parents is the student in the classroom. Failure to provide parents with appropriate information may lead to misinformation about our schools. It is the goal of the Merrimack School Board that information regarding school activities, programs, events, and organizations be properly disseminated to parents. The board also recognizes that community-based organizations, organizations may wish to display or distribute materials related to educational or recreational opportunities for students. However, such display and/or distribution must not interfere with the smooth operation of any school, or be disruptive to the educational purposes of the district. A, permitted distribution and display. The district shall permit informational materials from the following organizations, entities to be sent home with students or displayed in schools or school district buildings. Merrimack School District, including individual schools and recognized clubs, teams, et cetera. Merrimack School District parent-teacher groups, government agencies, local, state, and federal, community nonprofit organizations promoting or offering educational and/or recreational opportunities for students. Requests to display or distribute materials must be submitted to the SAU office, which will approve the request and forward the materials to the applicable school or schools for display or distribution. Organizations wishing to distribute materials must supply a sufficient number of copies. B, prohibited material. Information published by the school district, an individual school, an employee organization, or union, a recognized parent-teacher group, or any other individual, group, or organization which advocates a particular position on bond issues, political matters, labor relations, issues, or school district budgets will not be distributed through students or displayed in schools. The superintendent shall prohibit distribution or display of any materials which would interfere with the smooth operation of any school, or disrupt the educational purposes of the district unless such material is constitutionally protected. And so, the chief difference, as I have understood it, and I'm going to share with you what I've understood from our attorneys, and then if, any questions that you have, I'll make sure I write them, and I'll, I'll share, and we'll get an answer to you the next board meeting. There is, the, right now, the policy is written in such a way that the, the board has given authority to the superintendent to make reasonable decisions based on what is or isn't allowed. And we have to do that to be fair to all parties, so we have to, we can't say yes to this group and no to that group, unless there were a reason that were offensive to the district in the view of the superintendent. That would mean, that would be a disruption to the schools. This policy merely says that the board would have a decision to make whether it would allow any distribution of materials or none. So it could be the ruling of this board that you would just say, just to make it simple, we'll just say, we just won't distribute information from, you know, any entity that would like to provide it. And then, then we're, then we're clear, because we're not showing favoritism to one group over another. Or, the school board could say that, yes, we will, under the conditions here. And then it would be up to the superintendent to prohibit distribution of materials which would interfere with the school, with the smooth operation of a, of the school or school district, unless that thing would be constitutionally protected. And that's the big difference, is the reference to the constitutional protections. So, really what the school board needs to just be thinking about, as I understand it, is whether it wishes to have any distribution of materials at all, or not. If not, it's a rather simple matter, and we just don't. And so we get a request, and we say we just have made a decision that we won't distribute. Or, if we say we do, we'll do so under the guidelines permitted in the policy.
I have two hands up. Some, Naomi, and over to Cindy. Others decide later.
So could you clarify the difference between the materials that would be covered by this and the types of things at the building level that are disseminated regularly? In that, I'm seeing in the list that number one is the Merrimack School District, including individual schools. And I'm just wondering whether it inadvertently means that anytime a school or teacher wants to send anything home, it has to go through the SAU office? So could you distinguish between these categories of materials?
So, if I'm understanding your question, I might not be, so, if a teacher were to put out a message that says, don't forget, I'm sorry. If a teacher were to put out a message that says, don't forget your, don't forget to wear sneakers tomorrow for field day, or something like that, that would not need approval of the school district. But if a parent group were wanting to put forth a promotion for a fundraiser, let's say, then it would. Or, something like any kind of town entity, I don't want to name one, because I don't want to single one out, but any of the, you know, the youth-supporting groups, or, or any of those, those would also fall into the category of needing district SAU approval.
So that's what, what I figure that makes perfect sense? I'm wondering whether the wording of this makes that clear, or not.
I will seek clarification. Thank you.
So, I have another item that has come up that I've heard from parents over the years, and that has to do with bibles being handed out to our students, which I understand that we allow that because we allow so many other materials from MIA and things like that to be consistent, that we allow bibles to be handed out. Maybe it's once a year or something like that. So, what's a little interesting to me, I'm speaking a comment, is that we prohibit political materials. And I kind of put politics and religion in the same category. Are we not able to prohibit religious materials? And if we can't, then if someone wanted to hand out Koran, Korans or something, then they would be entitled to do that as well.
So, that's a, that's a very specific and, and qualitatively different case, because the individuals who have sought to distribute bibles once a year do not do it on public property, on, on school district property. They, and so we sought counsel about this recently. They are, and have been for some time, instructed to stand on town property, not school district property. And so, given that fact, we are in no position to authorize their distribution or not. That really isn't even our issue. The fact that for a number of years, they have, as a courtesy, called the office and said, we intend to do this on this given day, has implied that we actually have oversight over that, and we never have had. They are reminded when they call that they cannot stand on school property, and to the best of my knowledge, including this year, they have not. And so we have no jurisdiction, either the school board or the superintendent, to prohibit that distribution, because it, it is not on property that we oversee. So that's an entirely different matter, and that was something for which we sought legal counsel, because we wanted clarity on that as well. So, that's the issue of distribution on public property versus school district property, and it is not on school district property.
Okay. Now, thank you for that clarification. I wasn't aware of that. Is it something then they seek town approval from, to be on the streets? Is that, I would imagine that they would have to.
My understanding, I, I, I couldn't speak to that, and I wouldn't suggest that they should or shouldn't, or the town has or hasn't got a responsibility for that. I can only speak to the school district, and that, so the issue, again, was raised, well, we've been, we've been saying yes for years, and the response was, well, you really have had no jurisdiction to say yes or no. Because it's, if, if you tell them where, you know, that it can't be on your property, then you can't tell them to do or not do anything.
Okay. And I'm not making a judgment for or against it either. It's just that it raised the question for me when reading this policy, because I wanted to know where that fit in. because I wanted to know where that fit in to this. Thank you.
What did I miss? So are all the questions answered on the policy as presented? So with that, we will have a second reading at our next meeting. The meeting after that, we will put it on consent unless tangible reasons come up to take it off consent and readdress the content.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mark. This is what happens if it's six o'clock, non-public. Your schedule's all off. So sorry, I had to leave. So we are on to item number eight, which is the final response of town council requesting an easement for the sewer line in Madeline Bennett Lane. I'm going to preface, and I do have a motion I want to also make tonight. So in the matter of the Merrimack Middle School sewer line, history, facts, and content matter. As the school Board takes yet another affirmative vote on granting the sewer line back to the town, we wish to set the record straight on the matter once and for all. When the Merrimack Middle School was built, the construction of the sewer line, typically a public works project and therefore funded by the town, was undertaken by and paid for by the school district because at the time, the town did not wish to pay for the project. The then-director Public Works, Ed Chase, required that the sewer line be built essentially large enough to allow for potential future development. Even though this was the school's project, the town's requirement had to be heated, so the district built a sewer line to accommodate the need of the town, not the more limited need of one school. This resulted in the construction of a sewer line that is essentially bigger and more complicated than its current usage requires, meaning that the sewer line flow is not always sufficient to flush the system as it was constructed. The school district has maintained the sewer line ever since. It serves the needs of, of the Merrimack Middle School. It does function as needed, and it will continue to serve the needs of the Merrimack Middle School indefinitely. Over a period of the last 12 years or so, the town has requested the school district grant the sewer line to the town. On each of those occasions, the school Board representing the district at the time accepted the request and voted to grant the sewer line to the town at its request. This happened in 2007, then again in 2011. Each time, after the town made the request, the town then rejected the Board's offer of the line. This brings us to this past August, when the town again asked the school Board to grant them the middle school sewer line, anticipating a significant new development requiring town access to the sewer line. At special meeting of the school Board, which we held on August 26th, the, the Board held expressly to address this latest request of the town, and we voted unanimously to grant the town the sewer line under the condition that they accept the sewer line and adjacent road immediately so as to no longer continue an unnecessary back and forth between the two entities. The town's unwillingness to accept that condition brings us to the following place. Wanting to partner with the town and assist the developers' goals to building a development that can access town sewer, the school Board will withdraw its conditions despite repeated attempts to give and then have the town later refuse our sewer line. We make the motion tonight in the spirit of partnership with the town in its effort to support local development. We will continue to closely monitor the proposed construction to ensure the safe and continuous operation of the middle school, as is our responsibility, and hope that the motion, a significant compromise, will put to an end the multiple-year cycle of granting requests only to have the favorable response rejected. We hope after tonight's vote, the Board will, of the Board, that the town will take yes for an answer and just once and for all. So on August 26th, we had a three-part motion, and the first part is the part I'm looking to move tonight. So I move to amend the August 26, 2019 motion offering the transfer ownership of the Madeline Bennetts sewer line to the town of Merrimack by replacing condition one with the following. The town shall assume ownership and responsibility for the Madeline Bennett sewer line upon successful completion of the repair and/or replacement of the sewer line by the town. So at the time, the motion was that they take it immediately. And based on, in the spirit of collaboration, we are looking to let them take it at the end of the project. So I'm, since I made the motion, I'm here to request a second. Is that a second by Cinda? Are there any questions or comments on the motion? Andy?
So, it's a lot of history, there's a lot of stuff been said that's right, a lot of stuff said that's wrong, various forums. I agree with wanting to do the right thing to make sure that the town can move forward with the development. I certainly agree with that. But I'm concerned because the monkey's still not off our back, given the motion. Because we could agree to let the town work with the developer to move forward, give them access to the line, to allow them to do the corrections, the whatever needed to do. But there's nothing that at the end of it, and the key is, at the end says, at the end, the town takes ownership. I know that we can't force the town to take ownership at the end, given the way that it's written right there. But history of 12 years or longer has shown to me, what if it's, the town could make a judgment at the end saying, well, we did the repairs, but it's still not meeting our needs. We're not going to do ownership. I mean, to me, that's, that's the concern. I mean, and I know the town council members are out there. I'm, I'm just concerned that if we're going to show good faith, that I want to see some statement from the town council showing the good faith back. But that's just my position on this tennis ball.
Thank you, Andy. Cinda?
I just want to respond to Andy's comments. I mean, I, I seconded the motion. I agree with it. I think in the spirit of collaboration, I think it's the right thing to do. At the end of the day, collectively, the school Board and the town council are all supporting our taxpayers. And I think that, at the end of the day, I think this is a good thing, that we will no longer have that overall responsibility. I mean, if we didn't give it back to them, we would have the responsibility for whatever that period of time is and then, and then some going into the future. So if we make the repairs and then give it back, I'm okay with that. I mean, it's.
My point is, if the repairs are made, in our attempt to give it back, they don't want it. There's nothing in the motion that says they have to take it.
Sure. Mark?
So the, the motion is one part of this. There is an accompanying agreement that is being worked out between the attorneys of the two entities. And the issue that you are expressly talking about is contained more specifically in the agreement. And, and, and so I would say that your concerns are represented in that. So this is just one, this is just the motion that gets the ball rolling. And then the details, because, you know, the devil's in the details, and I think that's the point that you're making, is more included in the agreement. And then, and then the responsibility of the two parties to act in good faith will be supported by the agreement.
I would also say that our attorneys are taking a very active role in making sure that the language meets our expectations, meets our, you know, addresses our concerns. And I can say, page two, section four changed a lot of the language. And actually, some language was struck that we thought was very aggressive and unnecessarily aggressive. So item four, and I'm just going to read it. Upon successful completion of the Madeline Bennett sewer replacement project, A, the town shall convey and transfer, and the town shall accept ownership and control of the Madeline Bennett sewer. B, the school shall convey and transfer, and the town shall accept Madeline Bennett Lane up to the circle at the intersection with Old Blub Road as a class five town-owned highway. And, section C, the town shall issue a full certificate of occupancy for the Merrimack Middle School. Does that help?
Well, it does. It's, part of the way you explained it is you just changed the part, but there's the remaining part that wasn't clear. So I'm getting old. I don't remember everything. So I'm getting weird looks from the younger people that are remembering more than I am. All I, all I know is that I'm tired of the school Board versus the town council. I want to work together collaboratively. I want to work with people I've known for years.
I agree.
And frankly, what we've gone through in the last several months pissed me off because, yes, we're all working for the taxpayers, but there's this back and forth. I don't want the back and forth anymore. I don't want us to be put in this position. I want us to be able to have joint meetings and joint agreements, and we're all sitting here saying the same thing. I want that to be the case. So whatever this works out to be, I want that to be the end result. But, and if I spoke cynically about them receiving it, I apologize for that. I apologize to the town council members being here. But to be honest, I just want us to move forward, and I'm just frustrated up to here, so.
And I think that's why we're very adamant about the language and the tone of the language and the expectation of this project meeting our expectations. Because again, we don't want every five years to ask the same question of, have the same question asked of us, for us to be accommodating for them to say, never mind. And it's just some, the cycle we just want to end as well. So that's why we want the language to be definitive. If that's, that's not up for discussion, the cycle needs to end. So, and, and that's where the, our attorney worked with us to come up with that, called direct language, but also taking out the aggressive language that came from the original town proposal. So trying to find that, that appropriate tone between the two bodies in a, a binding document. Naomi?
So this isn't so much in favor or against. I'd like to move forward in any way that we can, but I'm curious, why the delay?
Why the delay?
Why? I mean, I, I'm sure there's a reasonable reason. I just don't know it. Do we have a sense of?
So I want to be, when you say delay, you're referring to?
What is the advantage to the town as a whole and to the school Board as a whole in not transferring ownership now, but rather doing the work in then later? Clearly, it's better to do it that way, according to smart minds. So what's going on there?
I, 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 I don't really know. I mean, I think, I think Andy's putting his finger on a difficult issue. Because to be honest, there, you know, I'm, I'm new to this role. And, you know, I don't quite know why there has been this challenge. But there is. And I don't, and I think, I guess I'm glad I don't have the history so much. But like, like Andy and like everybody else has expressed on the Board, we just want to move forward. I think it's unfortunate sometimes that the town and the schools don't act like we're all on the same team. We are actually on the same team, or we should be. I mean, you know, it's to the town's advantage to have a functioning, healthy school district. And so I don't know, but I think there's good faith. We really want to support the town, this effort. I don't know about the past. I can't express a reason for the delay. I can't. And I don't know that anybody on the Board can. I just know what we want to do.
I'd say I've been on the Board going on 10 years now. And until that meeting that we had with the town manager and the Chair of the Town Council, I was unaware. We even had a temporary certificate of occupancy, but that came up very quickly. So that's something that, you know, since we're opening our doors to voters in two of our buildings, that, that, for that to come up, that one of those buildings has only a temporary certificate of occupancy gave me pause and gave me, you know, cause for concern. These are things we want behind us. We want to feel like we're on solid ground and that can't be put into question. So that's why, for me, that, that was a driving reason it's important us to have this agreement. So, Matthew, who's been here since before 2010, so?
Oh, yeah. I've had, I almost fell into that hole when they were digging that line. That's all I can say. But from the town's point of view, I can see that they want to accept the line once it meets the Hampshire DES specifications or specifications that the town designed. So your Public Works Director is going to come up with the design using an engineer. It's probably not going to, it may not be the same design, but it's going to be a design that has minimum slopes. It's not going to have SAGs in it. The work's going to be done. It's going to be complete. It's going to be a good, functional, by-the-book sewer line. So the town doesn't want to accept it until that happens. However, by virtue of the town accepting the $1.2 million, it's going to oversee the project and ensure that that happens. So they don't want to accept it while it's in the condition it is, but they, I think, are making the guarantee to us that they accept the money, they will complete the sewer line in a timely fashion that will meet DES and town standards, period. Unless I'm wrong, that's the goal, right?
We're getting validation from the gallery, who happens to be, not the town councilors right now, that that is the goal.
People out there, but I just wanted to clarify.
One clarifying, your clarif, one clarification and your clarifier, and that is, the sewer we did design was designed by the town as well, the original.
It was, but in, in all honesty, because it was a challenging project, and anybody who was around it knew that. And, you know, maybe the design's going to be a little bit different. That's not up to us to say. In the end, the town is going on record as saying, we accept $1.2 million. We're going to do the design work, and it's going to work for the school, and it's going to take care of future developments. And in the end, you will have a product, one way or another. Regardless if it costs $1.3 million, you will have a sewer line that meets specification. I think that's their guarantee to us.
Okay. And so that's what we'll be working toward. So, so with that, there's a motion on the floor. If we feel okay with that, based on this discussion we've had, in the spirit of collaboration, I will put the motion to a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. The motion carries 500. Another offer of the sewer line. Are you asking to be recognized, Chair Koenig?
Yes, I am.
If you'd like to come to the microphone, please. You know how this works. Why am I telling you?
Thank you. Tom Koenig, One Dan Fourth Road, Merrimack, Chair of the Town Council. And I appreciate the conversation and the concerns. What I wanted to ask was in this motion, if you're done with this motion, if you in fact agreed to the memorandum of understanding that we had turned in, which we asked for approval on tonight, or not? Because we need to move forward with the program or not.
Our attorneys will be sending your attorneys what the language that we need, which is in the spirit of what you're asking for, but with consideration of school district operations.
Okay. You can't help me out with understanding more of what your specific requirements are, or?
Sure, please do.
So we've gotten to the point, it seems, where the, rather than the school and the town being able to talk about this, we've got attorneys doing it. So, so our attorney has been working with your attorney on language around the memorandum and the revised memorandum of agreement. My understanding is will be shared with the town's attorney tomorrow, pending the successful outcome of this motion. And so my understanding is that those two people will work out the details.
Well, I, I saw details from your attorney several days ago that we were perfectly acceptable to, and we thought that that would be what would be presented tonight and would be voted on. Is that not the case, or is it the case?
This is simply the memorandum, and I'm not sure what you've been privy to, but I think we're very close to. I can't speak to anywhere. I think our attorney should continue to finish this up. But I think that we're probably as close as you think we are. That'll happen tomorrow.
Okay.
I don't think there's going to, if I could just say, I don't think there's going to be anything in this that you see that you're going to be surprised at, and you're going to go, oh, my gosh, I can't believe they want this now. So that is, that is my hope for your response to this. Because that's the spirit in which we do it. If it was minor language cleanup, that's about it.
And I would say that, that's very customary when you have attorneys talking. I think it would be greatly inappropriate.
Well, they have to make money, so the more they talk, the more money they make.
But when, once you have attorneys set up to do, to work together, it would be very inappropriate, I think, for us to, to say anything that would be, that would not be, I think, I'm not, I wouldn't be comfortable with that.
And then, so Brandy's hand up and Naomi's hand up.
So again, a clarity piece. We won't have to gather to vote on the final memorandum then. We've just done something that will allow the lawyers to reach their conclusions and move along, right?
Are there any timing issues with that? I mean, that, that would be my next question with.
I think the issue has gone on long enough, and so I think we're trying to wrap this up as quickly as we can.
I mean, is that something that we would come in to sign, or would it wait till the next board meeting?
I'm going to let our attorney help us with that.
Thank you.
We, we would be doing that as well. Thank you. And our, our intent had been that when the council voted on what was sent forward, it was a final offer. We needed to get an answer back so we could move forward with this program. And so time is of essence. We were hoping to have an answer by tonight. If it's tomorrow, then we can probably live with that. But if it gets extended much longer than that, we start to have problems with being able to keep our contractor in line.
Well, I mean, you have an answer tonight in that the Board has a. Well, I mean, you have an answer tonight in that the board has a, a motion that they just approved that removes the conditions that were in the previous motion that the town objected to. So I think you have your answer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And if there is truly a meeting of the minds, I will personally drive to everyone's home or place of business and get a signature on this.
Thank you.
Part of being the new person is lack of knowledge, and I, I just want to say that I'm in full support of collaboration. I, and clearly my vote states that, but I think the one thing that really strikes me in all of this is that even though we are one town, there is so many dividers, and it saddens me that we even have that in our community. And I, I would like to go on record and say that I don't know what history is still top of mind, but for those of us that lack that history, there is no reason for the history to be a roadblock in moving forward for town, as well as for our school district. We are all in this community, we all pay taxes, we all want us to be in a great town with great people, with a great community. To have any hurdles that can get us there is sad, and I, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Brandy. So we are on to item number nine, which is the approval of September 16, 2019, Mets. I'll entertain a motion made by Andy, seconded, seconded by Brandy. And are there any, it's the Mets. I'm seeing Cindy. On page something.
I've got to find it. Okay, page five, line 189. It says, "Vice Chair Gualyumi commented she was very excited about," and then I would like it in more reflecting of what my comments were, "of having on-campus tennis courts because the current courts are not in close proximity to the high school." This just said that I was really excited about the tennis courts, and I didn't elect the context. Fair. And then, page six, line 206, I'd like to say Vice Chair Gualyumi said she felt one option is to consider one of the other houses for community, adult education, or tutoring. I did not recall that I said that it was important to eventually use, that I don't recall making that determination specifically, but that it was always something I was hoping that it would be considered. That's it.
Okay. So no other edits, we will put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. Abstain. The motion carries 4-0-1, with Board Member Naomi Schoenfeld abstaining. Onto item number two, which is the acceptance of gifts and grants under $5,000 with Matt.
This is a gift to Merrimack High School from the Guild of New Hampshire Woodworkers, treasurer Jim Forbes, 31 Milpon Road, Kidderi, Maine. It is to supply tooling for our new, and I'm going to like to say this, Powermatic 35 by 20 woodworking lathe. Now that sounds like a machine. So they're going to outfit us with a bunch of tools for this. It's from the Guild of New Hampshire Woodworkers to the woodworking program at the high school, which we know is very robust and very popular, and so the amount is $1,171.
And actually, I think that's in, we were kind of led with the presentation by Phil Carl a few months ago, where he talked about this, the collaboration with this group, so...
Yes.
Excellent, same group. I will entertain a motion? I feel like Andy is getting coached, yes? Go ahead.
I move that we accept the, the gift from the Guild of New Hampshire Woodworkers with our sincere appreciation.
Second, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. We are on to item number 11, which is other part-day correspondence. Is there any correspondence to come before the board? I had one, I had the parent email with questions on the board's role for advocacy on an issue at a school with a parent. And so I guided her through our governing process and what a board position would be, and we had that discussion. Andy?
There was also an email that, I don't know if it went to everybody, but at least went to me, about ensuring that all the, the state aid that we got was going to be used to offset taxes. Offset taxes not used for anything else.
Okay, I did not get it.
You didn't?
I was, I was wondering why I didn't see a response from you.
Yeah, I was waiting, but...
You referenced it in, when you were talking, when you were speaking to it earlier.
We can get that too, so it can be responded.
Okay, thank you. I would be glad to do that. Oh, there was a state rep, it was, it was an online, she has an online page.
No, this was a taxpayer that...
Oh no, I did not get a taxpayer email, no, a state rep was saying to contact us. And that state rep was misguiding that we would do anything but with that money. So with that, I just wanted to clarify that we will be doing nothing but with that money. So that, sorry, that's, I never saw the email though, so thank you. I, I appreciate a copy of that. So, any other correspondence from the board? Seeing none, comments, are there comments from the board? Cindy and Andy?
And there's two things that came up tonight. I don't usually speak during comments, but a couple of things came up that I wanted to comment on. One is, I've noticed that we've had quite a few surveys that have come, this request to conduct surveys, and our questions are always the same, to Andy's point earlier. And I'm wondering if we do need, I think, in preparation for these meetings, is some kind of a form that goes with those requests that have some of the basic questions we typically ask? You know, about privacy, about how will parents be notified? You know, some of the common things that we always like to know before we approve it. And I think that that would streamline the approval process and our time together better, if that sounds good to everybody else.
That's a great idea.
Okay, thank you. And then, secondly, was in response to something that Mark had said as relates to the policies, and the, about the policies always being good until they're not. And I have just a little different philosophy, although I agree with that, I have a, maybe a broader thought about that, or a, or a more general thought about the policies. And what I would say, my thought is on the policies, is that as a school board, that is a main component to our job and our responsibility. And, and when I look at all of our policies, I feel that sometimes it kind of throws me back when I see that it was last reviewed on our form eight, nine years ago. I, it makes, I don't think that, I think the perception can be this, that we're not reviewing them. So I feel like we should be reviewing them, even if we're just signing off on the fact that we're not making any changes. And I also feel that putting them in front of us might probe some questions that might not allow us to exhibit a leadership position within the state, should certain things come up, that maybe no other boy, board has stumbled upon. And I feel like, without making it a huge monumental project, I know Shannon, you and I have spoken about this in the past...
I've asked for policy committees when I was an at-large member, because it's something I've always, it's not been the will of the board, so it's not really gone forward, but a policy committee is designed to review policies, basically, you know, not having to be lawyers per se, but take that role, and, you know, we do get regular updates, legislative updates from our different, from HSA, from HSAA, from different organizations in the state that have their finger on that pulse, to say what compliance issues may come up at the state and federal level. So with that, I've always been a fan of having a policy committee, so that way, not necessarily having a, a policy reviewed, review policy, but to say, you know, how are they being reviewed? You know, when was the last time they were updated? It could be going through blanket policies to say, you know, none of these have been reviewed since 2006. I'm just going to use the numbers I'm not looking at right now. But say, you know, these 15 policies have, have, are consistent with the laws, and the laws have not changed to make them anything but. To have a three-review policy, you can do them in blocks. So I've always wanted that for, for this board, but, you know, it needs, I think, you know, it's going to be work though. And with that, you know, it needs to be shared, so, and I think that the will of the board may be changing now to, to want something more like that. So if that's the case, we should definitely put that as a, an agenda item to establish a policy committee, if that's the will of the board.
Or to have a further discussion on it.
Sure, absolutely.
I just raise it in the comments section for something for consideration in the future, because it's something that's been bothering me, because I personally feel like I'm not doing my job. When I look at dates like that, and I feel that, it, it just doesn't sit right with me. And so, I just wanted to bring it up.
Okay. And Andy, I think your hand was up as well.
So, two quick comments, that they don't overlap what Cindy did, although I, I agree with both of what she said. First thing is, this, this whole thing about the state aid increase and stuff like that, to a person sitting on the sideline watching this progress over the last six months, everything was talking about school aid, school aid, school funding, school funding. At the end of the day, the money that came is really to offset taxation. Has nothing really, I mean, I know it's based on school size and stuff, but it has really nothing to do with schools. So, I completely support giving the money back to taxpayers, I think we'll all benefit from it, but the game about funding our schools, and the schools not being able to utilize any of the money that they're getting, is frustrating for me as a person just watching.
That's why I called it legally laundering it.
I, you know, it's, whatever, I'm a school board member, but I'm also a taxpayer, and I'm also somebody that tries to say things straight, and this was anything but straight. So, I had misconceptions about what the money could be, I think a lot of us did, until we understood exactly the way it was going to be distributed. So, in my mind, I support what we're doing, I support the fact it's going to, you know, nearly 800,000, what, 780, or what's the number?
Yes, correct.
780 is going to give, sent back to taxpayers, it's going to help, it's great, but the way it got there was silly.
Yeah.
The other, the other comment is, at last, the last meeting that we had, we talked about, it's Planning and Building Committee came and talked about the plan for the campus. And there's been a lot of blow-by on social media and other stuff, that the school board is out spending money, willy-nilly, who's going to pay for this, we don't need it. I want to be specific that the discussion was, let's look at what we could do with doing an SAU building in this area around the, the front of the high school for future planning. There's no commitment that next week we're going to do this, that we're going to rape and pillage the, the taxpayers looking for money to do this stuff. This is, and the frustrating part is, when the last time we put an SAU sped building question out on the ballot, people said, "Where's your plan? Where's your plan? What's your plan? You're just going to plop a building someplace? Where's your plan?" And what we learned from the town is, the way they got the town garage was to show the plan, to show the methodology. So what are we doing? We're trying to do planning. We're trying to look at it. It's not clear whether there's going to be tennis courts that are going to be on this thing. It was just a concept from the Planning and Building Commission. I mean, will the SAU potential building be where it's stated to be? Not necessarily. The whole idea of getting a plan is blank slate. What do we do? What's the right thing to do? So I just want to make clear that this is the beginning of planning. It's not committed to do anything, it's not, you know, doing something at the next ballot to put some high-priced building or, or work done. It's not the case. Plan. That's all we're asking for. As a man, as a liaison to Planning and Building, that's all I want to see, is the ability to plan. Period.
Brandy? Oh, sorry. I look to my left sometimes, too.
I, communication has been something that we've spoken about multiple times. And to piggyback on what Andy was saying relative to social media, I have been struggling as of late with comments that I've been reading, because I personally feel that there's a lack of, of understanding as to what goes on from a board perspective. How much time, effort, and energy go into every single decision that's made at this table and behind closed doors? With that said, I put together something that I was going to include in my budget message, but I, it really truly doesn't have a whole lot to do with the budget, and more to do with communication. Communication has been greatly improved this year, and I truly do thank the administration for your efforts in this area. I will say that while it's better, I would personally like to see us continue to grow in this area. And when I say "us," I am not just speaking to the administration, I am speaking to the public. As a member of the Merrimack community, I am truly saddened by the lack of formal communication our community, community chooses to use. Social media does have its place, and I appreciate the use of social media to quickly convey your message to a mass audience. Not all communication should be done to the masses, yet as a community, that seems to be our method of communication when discussing our district, teachers, the administration, and this board. I am not suggesting that our community no longer share via social media. I am however suggesting that direct, formal, productive communication has its place as well. My email address is public, and yet my inbox is empty. We as a board sit here every other week, and usually the general public is few. The reality is that we are one community. We are one district. We all have the same goal, to improve our district and provide excellence in education while keeping the tax burden top of mind. We may have differences in opinion as to how to achieve that goal, but it is still one goal. So while I ask the administration to continue to improve in this area, I respectfully encourage and challenge the public to do so as well.
Thank you, Brandy. Are there other comments from the board? And then over to administration, John?
Thank you very much. As you'll all notice tonight, there was no consent agenda, and we had a plan to move forward to talk about our grant for UDL through the Chan Zuckerberg Foundation. Unfortunately, we received notice this week that out of 270 schools that applied, we did not receive that grant, or, and we were no longer in consideration. So I publicly want to thank Bill Wilmont and Adam Carragher for coming forward and presenting, and I've talked to Bill this week, we're going to keep trying for other grants and opportunities. The feedback we got was that we are still very young in our, in our stages of implementing UDL, and they were looking for more of an established school that had multiple years involved in the, in the project and implementation of UDL. But someday we'll be there, so thank you.
Thanks, John. On that note, we always move onward and upwards, so we will find new opportunities, and thank you for making those efforts, you know, the team, and especially, you know, Adam and Bill. And you, of course, because you're very instrumental in that. So on that note, we're on to item number 12, new business, are there any new business to come before the board? Seeing none. Item number 13, committee reports, are there any committee reports from the board? Andy?
So, a report and then a request. So, under reports, last Monday was the monthly Suresk Board of Directors meeting, I tried to report back on that. One of the, the exciting part is, we had a person accept our job offer to be the program director for Suresk. So I, this is a real exciting thing for Suresk to be able to move forward, to be able to look at improving and expanding the services it provides to districts such as Merrimack. So, sort of a heads up to administration that if you hear a contact from Suresk to want to talk more about planning and things like that, answer the phone, because I think it's going to be beneficial to the district and other districts to expand what they do, and may save us some money as a district in that one. The query, or the question that I have, or the request, is when we did the liaison assignments, we shut at the beginning of the year, or actually it was last April, I think it was.
Yep, April, May, yep.
It was after the election. Naomi and I did some just juggling of positions of liaison. In particular, I, I had the fortunate thing to get Budget Committee, and she was going to take the Wellness Committee that, that used to leave that on a Monday afternoon. Well, they have decided this year to ma, meet on Thursdays, Thursday afternoon at 3:30, and she is no longer able to attend.
But you're teaching a very good class, I'm sure.
Right.
Absolutely.
So, the request of the board, and we don't have to answer it now, is there's a Wellness Committee meeting that happens, and it's going to be happening this Thursday, three days from now. Um, and... And then, it happens about once a quarter, it's not every month. So, if anybody has Thursday afternoons at 3:30 that they would be willing to or want to participate, that's an open request, so.
Thank you. And on that note, just let Sandy know in the main office so any materials can get forwarded to whoever becomes liaison.
There are no materials to forward.
Okay.
Simply put, when you go there, there are on the table.
It's one of the three committees I've not served on in my nine years, so...
Yeah, there's, you get, you get to the meeting, and there's stuff on the table, so...
Well, I do have something this Thursday, but Brandy?
I can't make this Thursday, but from that point forward, I'll be able to take that on if needed or desired, which, I can fulfill that request, just not this Thursday. My son is playing in the playoffs for middle school.
Yeah, it was supposed to be last week, but then they had, it got canceled because of potential weather. I don't remember what it was, but I'll let them, if you wanted to do it moving forward...
I can do it moving forward, just not this week.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
And you're not the only one that can't come this week. There's members of staff that can't go either, so...
Okay. Matt?
Yes, I have a committee report. Is it time?
Yeah, it is, actually. I think, are you done with yours?
Yeah, I don't wanna...
Go for it.
Okay. As you know, I'm a member of the Town Center Committee, and we had a meeting last Friday, and I conveyed to them our, the board's conversation and the school district's planning and building committee's conversation regarding the overall planning strategy for the high school campus area and relooking at traffic flow and everything like that. To make a long story short, the esteemed Nelson Disco, who is the chair of that committee, as well of all the other members, were, accepted that whole concept very positively, and they will do anything in their power or in their bailiwick that they can to help us and support us, and perhaps even be a part and give information to, or suggestions. So, they kind of like to be a part of the whole process, which absolutely makes a great idea, 'cause it is the Town Center Committee, and they were very positive towards the whole program. So, I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Matt. And we always appreciate, you know, how, again, we just talked earlier about tying into the town, and nothing does more than that than that committee and our campuses.
It's a wonderful committee, yeah.
So, absolutely. So, I'm glad you could serve for us, and we appreciate that. It's during the middle of the day, so... So, are there any other committee reports?
Matt, is it the School Bus Stop Committee? That, or no? Is it an actual committee?
Yes, you're...
Oh, the Town Center Committee? Yeah.
School Bus, School Bus Committee.
No, School Bus.
The School Bus Committee, Matt, right?
Yes.
Yes, so...
Okay.
You would give a School Bus Committee report, yes.
If you wanna go ahead, and we haven't come to a...
We have not, no. But I'm, it's part of the report. So, I met with Matt and a few others regarding a school bus stop concern, and we are currently looking into it and have not yet come to a decision, but are still in the process of discuss, discussions.
Great, thank you. And we, for Parks and Rec, we were unable to meet this month, but there's a big event this week. It is the Town's Halloween Party that the Parks and Rec puts on every year. It is one of the highlights of the Social Kid Year, and it is at Wasserman Park this Friday, October 25th, from 4:30 to 8:30. And they will be having contests. I would definitely look at their Facebook page, their website, which you can link off of our town website to get to as well. And they do have age-appropriate and age-clustered contests and activities, so that way, there's something for everyone. So, it is one of the highlights of the year, so it is this Friday. And if there are no other committee reports, we will go, I would go on to public comments for agenda items, but there is no public. We will take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session per RSA 91 dash A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, sections A, B, and C, made by, we're gonna go with Naomi, seconded by Brandy. Oh, Brandy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Naomi?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
Cindy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you, and good night.